Crystal City Council Meeting and call it to order. Would you like to do roll call?
Just for a moment, sorry.
Okay, I guess we're not recording yet.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna open the City Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. First order is roll call.
Mayor Deschler.
Here.
Councilmember Idbo.
Present.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onasarosin.
Here.
Councilmember Budiszewski. Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, I'll ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item is we are going to approve the agenda as it was posted. Is there any discussion or Tracy?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, okay. Okay.
I will second that.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. The next item is we have appearances and our Police Chief Hubbard, Brian Hubbard, will present some awards to our couple officers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is getting us rounded out in some of our awards, so thanks for letting us have some time here tonight. As you know, Crystal Police Officers do outstanding work every day to serve, protect, and assist those in the community who live, work, and worship here. Most of their work goes largely unrecognized, and we all understand that is part of this job. However, there are times when the actions of officers far surpass our normal motto of service with compassion, integrity, and professionalism. As a part of the Police Department's recognition program, we feel there are times that accomplishments should be recognized in front of the City Council and community, which is why we're here tonight. I'm honored to recognize some officers tonight whose work has met that threshold. So I'd like to have Deputy Chief, former Lieutenant Pete Underthin come forward, along with Investigator, soon-to-be Sergeant Nick Schwalbe. Come on forward, you don't get to sit back there. Investigator Tim Torville. Investigator, soon-to-be Sergeant Matthew Wright. And Juvenile Officer John Wilks. These gentlemen, along with Crime Analyst Matt Hafner and Investigator Marcus Issa, have been awarded the CPD Mission Award for Service. In April 2025, the Hennepin County Attorney met with the Crystal City Council to provide stats and updates, which included information about the work of the Crystal Police Department. During this meeting, the county attorney shared that the Crystal Police Department had among the very highest clearance rates for all agencies in Hennepin County, including a 66% clearance rate for crimes against persons compared to the county average of 36%, a 37% clearance rate for crimes against property compared to a 14% countywide average, an 11% clearance rate for motor vehicle theft compared to a 3% countywide average, a 73% clearance rate for robbery crimes compared to a countywide average of 18%. Wow. And an 81% clearance rate for crimes against society compared to a 72% countywide average. Anecdotal information has indicated for a number of years that the Crystal Investigative Unit is one of the highest functioning units in the area. Some of this information includes the volume of search warrants processed, the ability of members to investigate and solve cases, the victim-centered approach to investigations, the utilization of technology and case resolution, intelligence sharing and gathering capabilities, the recovery of property, and the volume of cases submitted for prosecution. In addition, by providing case resolution and justice to victims of felony crimes at levels not seen in most other areas within Hennepin County. The Crystal Police Department Mission Award for Service is presented to department personnel who embody the mission of the Crystal Police Department by reflecting the highest traditions of the law enforcement profession, going above and beyond the call of duty through their outstanding or consistent and high-quality acts of service towards the community, and is being presented to the Crystal Police Department Investigative Unit for their outstanding accomplishments in investigating, solving, and prosecuting crimes on behalf of those that live, work, play, and spend time in Crystal. Thanks, gentlemen.
I remember you, when you first started, you broke your hand or your arm. Thank you for all your work, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Great job, thank you.
Appreciate your work. Thank you so much, appreciate your work. Thank you, appreciate you.
Great work.
Matthew, you can just keep on running right over here. The second award that I would like to present tonight is to Investigator Matthew Wright, the CPD Mission Award for Compassion. In May 2024, a citizen emailed the Crystal Police Department looking for information on a criminal sexual assault that she reported in 1963. A quick check indicated there was no existing law enforcement data and that the statute of limitations for this alleged crime had expired. Knowing this case had no ability to be criminally charged, Investigator Wright began an investigation into the incident with the sole purpose of providing a sense of closure to the victim and answering some lingering questions she had. During the course of the investigation, Investigator Wright attempted to track down a variety of suspects and potential witnesses who were now scattered around the state and country after the passage of 61 years. Through his investigation and multiple witness interviews, he was able to learn the identity of the suspect and confirm that the suspect had sexually abused other youth during the time period of the victim's assault. Investigator Wright also learned that the suspect was now deceased. Knowing that this case had no legal standing, the sole purpose of conducting this investigation was the spirit of compassion and victim service. The information Investigator Wright gathered will hopefully allow the victim to validate her original report and concerns and move forward from the incident that has been plaguing her thoughts and emotions for 61 years. The Crystal Police Department Mission Award for Compassion is presented to department personnel who embody the mission of the Crystal Police Department through their day-to-day activities and have shown great compassion and have gone above and beyond the call of duty in their response to the community, and is being presented to Investigator Matthew Wright for his exceptional care, concern, and compassion shown to this crime victim.
Yes, great job. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for the time, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. You know, they used to get pins when they got, do you do pins anymore?
They already got.
Oh, they already got. All right, the next item up for discussion is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is a bunch of items, actually, which are normally routine and non-controversial, so we just read them in one motion. So I'll go ahead and read them. First one is approval of the minutes from the following meetings. Our City Council Budget Work Session on August 14th, 2025. City Council Work Session on August 19th, 2025. And a City Council Meeting on August 19th, 2025. Approval of disbursements over $25,000 submitted by the Finance Department. Approval of a list of license applications submitted by the City Clerk. Adoption of resolutions to apply for a Hennepin County Youth Activities Grant for projects in two different parks, Forest School Park and Woodland Park. Adoption of a resolution approving updated fund balance policy. Approval of a 2026-27 contract with Law Enforcement Labor Services Local 44 Police Officers. Approval of a 2026 through 2027 contract with Law Enforcement Labor Services Local 56 for the police supervisors. Approval of the 2026 wage adjustment and insurance contribution for nonrepresented employees. Adoption of a resolution authorizing replacement of doors at the South Fire Station. And lastly, adoption of a resolution awarding the contract to HK Solution Group HydroClean for the 2025 sewer rehabilitation project. Are there any questions on any of those items? Does anybody care to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read? David?
Oh.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second? Tracy?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Consent Agenda passes. Our next is Open Forum. Open Forum is an opportunity for residents or businesses to come and chat with us for a little bit and discuss things, ideas, concerns that they might have. Doesn't necessarily mean we will discuss it this evening, but it would be something that you could bring up that concerns you or you have ideas, and we could address them at a later, at a meeting in the future. So is there anybody here tonight to talk about Open Forum? Anything on Open Forum? No, Bert? Okay. All right, well, seeing nobody here for Open Forum, we'll close Open Forum. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Let's see. I guess we are going to be doing some liquor violation. So let's see. First one is the Council will consider civil penalties for a violation of liquor license regulations by Cajun for Seafood LLC Cajun Kitchen located at 5440 West Broadway. And do you, who wants to read the report on this? Is that you, Kim?
Adam is going to.
Adam, okay, I'm sorry.
I will feel that, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. As was noted, there are three violations for the Council tonight. One thing to remind the Council about, these were done last December, December 6th, the compliance check failures, and so the previous penalties are still effective for these. The first one was the Cajun Kitchen, and the, if you saw the report, the owner sale, or underage sale was done, and then they have gone through the adjudication for the criminal prosecution, and so now they are before the Council for the administrative penalty phase. Are there any specific questions on this? I don't know if the owner or anybody representing Cajun Kitchen is here. Mayor, I would ask that you offer the opportunity for the representative to speak.
Okay, would you like to come up and to the dais and share anything about the incident? Or have you made, you know, improvements with your staff in terms of teaching them to card all guests? What, could you step up? I can't, we can't hear you.
Yes, I did, I did a teaching, you know, do not shout underage under 21, and will not happen again.
Okay, all right. Does anybody have any questions of the?
Do you have a system where you check IDs or what do you have in place?
Um, I made a post on the, on the countertop that you need to check ID every time when shouting liquid and alcohol to anyone, and some posts, every post on the wall to remind them, you know, need to check every person who drink alcohol.
And prior to this, did you have anything on the wall? Or what was your system prior to this violation?
Uh, what's your question?
So before this violation?
Yes.
What was your process then?
Um, I, I mean, I trained, I training need to check, and I post also on the, on the servers was check ID every time, ID.
So what's different between what you were doing then and what you're doing now?
It'd be more poster after, after, more poster on the wall after the violation happened, yes.
More signs?
Yes, more signs, more poster on the wall right now.
Councilmember Joe Tash.
Can we hear the staff report before we get into?
That was the staff, he gave it.
Yeah, there's not much to it.
Oh, okay.
The, the compliance check was conducted on December 6th, 2024. As indicated in the police report, the underage sale took place. And now the criminal process had been adjudicated. It was, there was a stay of adjudication for one year with no same or similars, and pending that, or now that that's done, the city is moving forward with the administrative penalty phase, which is what's before us.
Thanks.
Yes.
The Police Department offers a free training. Have you encouraged your staff to do the training that's offered?
Uh, free training?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for, for people that are serving alcohol, there's training on how to comply. It's free.
It's free?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think.
Once a year?
Okay.
The police will have a training session.
Okay.
And I, I don't know, I suppose it depends on the number of employees. I think in the past that classes have been held here.
We do them here unless there is a specific request. We have done them at individual businesses.
Okay. And we send letters out about that, correct?
To all of the establishments that are licensed.
So is the liquor license in your name?
Yes, under my name.
So you should be getting the letters.
Uh, email or mail?
U.S. Mail.
Okay. Okay.
Just, you know.
Because, you know, I don't go research a lot right now, so might be, you know, someone get mail and they do not, like, show to me, so I, you know, I didn't get it. But I would check, I would go check.
When do those classes usually happen? Is it the fall or?
We, we do them a couple times a year. I don't know when the next one is currently scheduled.
Okay, but you wanna, we can make sure to reach out to you again.
Okay.
I mean, and send you a letter.
Appreciate.
And are you at the business most days?
Uh, yeah, I, I go there every week, once a week, so.
Oh, you do?
I do, yeah, once a week.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't seem like very much.
See me?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I, I don't work there.
Oh, you just own it?
Yeah, my employee working, I sometime work in the kitchen, so you might don't see me there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I just do also want to remind the Council that with the changes, the code changes that were done earlier this year, now going forward, all liquor licenses do require that the staff, all, anyone who will be serving as part of the terms of the new license.
Liquor license, they have to have the class, okay.
Correct, within, within the last year.
New ones or any established business?
Because it's an annual renewal of the license, so it will be all businesses.
Okay.
So I believe they're being mailed, they, the notices of the classes get mailed out and emailed to the account on file.
Okay, all right. So does anybody else have any questions? So now what?
I'll just make, I just have a comment. A lot of businesses that sell alcohol, they have a point-of-sale system where whenever they sell alcohol, they have to get an ID and they put in the ID in their system on the computer, and it's a good failsafe for a lot of businesses, and a lot of businesses use that. So I'd highly encourage you to have a system like that rather than, or in addition to, obviously, signs that you post in your business. I think that's helped out a lot of businesses in Crystal because these things can happen with, if you don't have consistency in that, that system will help provide that consistency more for your business, so I would just recommend you look into that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So do we have, yeah, a motion for any kind of a penalty or what?
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $750 and a one-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. And this is just for alcohol, they can still be open to serve food, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And they will work with, you'll work with our city clerk, and a day will be chosen on which you will not be able to sell alcohol if this passes.
I choose the day?
No, you'll work with the city staff. After the, after tonight, they'll come out and talk to you, or not come out and talk to you, but you can chat with them on the phone and set up a time.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion then? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so. Try, try to tell the staff to be a little more, a lot more careful. Okay. Thank you. All right, next one is, let's see, this is for a violation on Hope Liquor located at 111 Willow Bent. And City Manager Adam Bell will also address the Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. Again, the same compliance date, last December. During that time, Hope Liquor also failed their compliance check. You have the police report in front of you. This case also reached a police settlement to have the case continued for dismissal for no, one year with no same or similars. We are now at the administrative phase. It looks like there is a representative here, and they do have the opportunity again to have a hearing. The staff's recommendation again is the $750 with one-day license suspension for their first violation.
And you, are you the owner?
Yes, I am.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to chat about with the Council?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I have few things I write down when I was waiting for this.
Okay, you might want to speak up just a little bit, so.
Yes, I have few things I write it down.
Okay.
For this, so please just bear with me. My name is Hope Melinda, the owner of Hope Liquor. I have written these few lines when I was outside waiting for this meeting, and I, I hope you would not mind me reading this. Madam Mayor and City Council Members, first of all, I would like to thank you all for giving me an opportunity to learn a great business as far as I'm concerned in this great city of Crystal. Second, I would like to apologize from the bottom of my heart for the incident that occurred on December 6th of selling liquor to underage. I should not have any excuse as I promised you when you approved my license to operate a liquor store in this great city, that I would ask for ID from anyone and everyone. I did exactly that except for that one incident and no excuse. I have had many incidents of stealing from that day I opened my business. I was able to call police so many times. Thank you, police, with your team, they have been very helpful for me for this incident. I would like to, um, okay. Madam Mayor, I have been nothing but a law-abiding citizen with only one driving ticket my whole life. I would like to ask you for forgiveness in this particular incident. This is my, my very first time to do something as big as this for, as far as I'm concerned, and I promise you that I will never, this will never happen again, and I'll tell you why. I am under your feet requesting for mercy. Please consider waiving the first-time violation, and I promise you that it will never happen again. Let me tell you what happened that day. Because of the shoplifting was happening so many times, and I just started my business, I have so much, I work so many hours, I have one part-time staff, one on-call, and a few family member, they come help. I'm there seven days a week. I go through of stealing young kids, they come there stealing. My, my store is so big just to be just only one person in there. And this day, this young man walks in, I said hi. He didn't say hi back to me, I was like, I think this is one of them, because the, most of the time the people have been stealing, I can tell when I look at their face, and I'll be putting camera, I have so many cameras, I put this angle, I put this angle, that I focused on looking at him, maybe he could be stealing, and when he came, he went to the walking pool, I stayed, I spent like a few times there, and I was just putting camera and camera in there, because they go there putting singles, putting the jacket and clothes and putting their pants. So when he came, I'm focusing, looking at him, maybe he says something, and I forgot to ask him for the ID, but no excuse for that. And mitigations. Thank you for a new audience that require all of us to go through training before we can sell alcohol within the city. All Hope Liquor staff, including two backup family member, have gone through the training, was very helpful. I will continue to pay attention to all city and state, to all city and state available meeting, training, etc., for continued education for myself and all staff. We have added very visible signs that says "we" ID, no excuse. And my, the POS we have, we have a check ID, we can scan the ID. Sometimes the different state ID taking a longer time to look where the, the date, so it's easy to scan the ID and it will tell us the age. That's, I was able to pass the next, the, the time when they came back for, for that. And I'm very open for guidance from chamber as what else should I do to make sure something like this will never happen again? Thank you very much for listening again. I am so sorry, and I'm asking for forgiveness and mercy. Thank you so much again.
Anybody have any questions? Do you sell just liquor there?
Yes.
Okay, so no food or anything else?
No. I do sell non-alcohol. I have non-alcohol, wine, beer, I have.
Right.
Yeah, those kind of stuff, yeah.
Trying to think where you're at, I'm over there in that area all the time.
It's right next to the Hispanic grocery store.
The what?
The Hispanic grocery store.
Oh.
I didn't know.
Tracy?
Did you have that point-of-sale on your system when this occurred? Would have you overridden that when it popped up to ask you to look at the driver's license when he tried to purchase?
No, it didn't pop up that day. It's, um, so it is about us, and right now, after that incident, we went back, put every single thing we have in the store automatically will pop up. So we, when we were putting things in the system, we didn't, we didn't do that. It was like, we will ask and do it.
But now, when I scan the item, the first thing will come on the screen will ask you for ID. So that will tell me right away, like, I have to, to ask for the ID.
And what was your process before this?
My process of all this?
Of verifying age? If, if you didn't have the point-of-sale, then what was your?
Was there, but was not. So any item right now, once I scan the item, the pop-up, asking ID will pop up. So by that time, we have to set that. By that time, was not setting that. Myself, I'm the one supposed to ask the ID. Yeah.
Well, you know, this is where my, you know, my heartstrings get pulled because she's obviously a very, very small business. Only, um, revenue she has is selling her products. And a $750 fine and a one-day suspension to me is really a hardship for a small business owner.
Seems a little punitive in this case.
I mean, if she had other products that she was selling that she could sustain, you know, the business. I, I mean, I, you know, I'm not opposed to a one-day suspension, but I would like to see a reduction in the amount of the fine. Or the fine and...
I would propose one or the other, not both, because she's implemented this new system at great expense or some expense. And she's taking care to...
I don't think it's a new system. She just scanned the items into the system.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Forrest, do you have a, like a compromise here?
Uh, no, I'm gonna channel John here, I'm sorry. Um, I, I personally think that, you know, the facts as they are here are that a violation occurred. And I, the only reason I would lean to reducing the fine or, uh, not having any sort of enforcement would be if I didn't feel confident in the facts of the case and that I didn't feel confident that the violation occurred. We have an admission of guilt. I feel confident it happened and therefore I'm, I would personally be for the, um, for the fee table as it, as it lay, as it's laid out. Cause I, I don't feel super confident in being able to show that there was any specific mitigating, like, instance in the case in front of us. Like, I'm very happy that you came in front of us and you explained your case and that you're working on having this never happen again. I think that shows, you know, really good character and incredible, um, you know, business fortitude as well. However, the violation occurred and the, the penalty table is pretty clear. So that's, I, I think that we shouldn't be changing fees and suspensions just because we feel a certain type of emotion when the, the case is pretty clear. So that's, and that's just my opinion. So I just thought I'd share that, so.
Adding something to that. This is my first year on, in the business. It's, it's really tough. I still work under laws. And this is the only work I have. I still, all my savings I have added in this business. Maybe, uh, next year, maybe the end of this year, I'll break even, but I still work under laws. I have only one staff, which is not a full-time. I do all the hours myself. I'm just asking for forgiveness for, for this.
Well, you know, part of my empathy comes from, I had a aunt and uncle that had a small liquor store in Wisconsin for many, many, many years. And I know the margin on the alcohol is so small. You know, I, I think people were thinking that they were some rich people or something, but the truth is, they were working seven days a week, 12, 14 hours a day. And, you know, they, they made a living to support their family, but that was about it. And so I just fear that $750, I mean, she probably have to have the store open for another month just to make that up and...
Right. I ju, I just feel really uncomfortable having our, um, our penalties be based off the size of a business. I think that that's a... It's a slightly arbitrary way of assigning penalties and I, I, I think it's, it's a dangerous thing to do.
Yeah. Well, and I think it's a dangerous thing to do not to care about our small businesses either.
I, I agree, I just, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we are community partners here. We want our businesses to succeed. We want them to, you know, follow the law, obviously, but I don't want to see them go out of business because, you know, we, we just don't have any wiggle room to work with them, so. Tracy and then Teresa?
I, I feel, I feel bad, I do. But when you open a business where you're selling products that are considered dangerous to society potentially, you know, there's great responsibility with that. We're very open about what the fees and the penalties and the fines are if violations occur. We offer training, we offer everything we can to make sure the businesses are aware of what the expectations are. As the owner, I feel like you set a standard and you not following the requirements or the expectations. Probably, to me, that shines a little worse than maybe an employee that did the violation. I, I just feel like I, I can't go speeding and then try to go to the police and say, hey, can I get this reduced? You know, it's a behavior that I did. I know that there's repercussion. And when I do the behavior, I, I accept that I might get caught and I might have to pay that fee. This is the same way. I, I feel bad, but I can't feel more bad than you do. If, if, if it was that detrimental, I feel like you would have made sure that, that, that sales wouldn't occur illegally. So I'm with Forrest. I, I feel like we, we have to follow what we have in our code.
Teresa?
I was just gonna point out that for, first violation is a fine up to $750. I think there's some room to wiggle there a bit.
Tajee?
I appreciate you being here. Thank you for doing business in Crystal. For me, and I've been very consistent in all of these, it's a very black and white issue. And so, yes, the violation occurred. So I will be voting in favor of the, of the full penalty. I, I do, I understand that's like a burden to your business and I have a responsibility to ensure business is done properly in our city. And so that's why I'll be voting that way.
So does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, real quick, I'll just say my piece. So for me, I want business owners to come in here if they have a violation. And I want them to talk to us and explain how it won't happen, steps that they're taking to prevent it from happening again. And when that happens, I feel like then we should lower the, the fine that we give people because it shows that there's a change being made. You talked about your point-of-sale is now bringing up, ringing up for every item that is purchased, which is a good change. So I, I would, I'm good with some leeway on the fee. But if there's a second violation later down the road, I would not have any leeway on that. So that's just my piece on that.
Thank you. Hmm?
It's three and three.
Right.
Someone should put a motion out.
Somebody want to put a motion on the table?
I will make a motion to, um... Based on the staff report, including findings of, presented in this matter, a penalty of $250 and a one-day license suspension.
I'll second that.
Can there be a, a discussion real quick?
Yes.
Can I ask, um, an opinion on this? Or is it bad for me to ask?
I think that's what attorneys are here for, to help us, keep us out of trouble.
I just don't want to get in trouble for asking.
You can ask a question. Understand that the answer to the question will be a matter of public record.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
So you don't want to ask it now?
I do want to ask it because I, I, I just, I want to make sure we're...
Lay it out there. Get the cards on the table.
What's your opinion on us deviating from the penalty table?
In my opinion, anytime you deviate from the penalty table, you should indicate why you're deviating from the penalty table. And you should be cautious to make sure that those deviations are consistent from one case to another.
Well, I, you know, I think it's been stated that her sole business is alcohol sales. She has no other opportunity to keep, remain open and sell other product that wouldn't be as devastating to her. And she came and she made some corrections. So, I mean, those are the things that I see. And of course, I, you know, I have a heart.
But wouldn't the expectation be that those are there when they open this business, selling this product?
Yeah, but I, you know, I think some of it is a training issue too, you know. I, I know that you, you guys are really, really, really strict on this. I, I am too, but I'm not as... I don't get wigged out about it, like...
I mean, I don't know, I got kids that are new drivers on the road and so I do get wigged out. It's responsibility.
Right.
And it's not just a fickle thing. It potentially could be life or death. If somebody comes in and buys a product and gets drunk and drives and kills my kid, I'm gonna be really upset about it. And I'm sure any parent would feel that way or anyone whose loved one got killed from a drunk driver. So for me, it's not, it's not just one issue of trying to have mercy on somebody. I do want to have mercy on you, but I also, we also have responsibility for the safety of our citizens. So where do our loyalties lie? I don't know. I mean...
I agree with you. I agree with you. I did it. I'm asking for apology. That's it. I agree with you. That was me on my hands. I'm just asking for forgiveness for what I did.
I understand that. But you have to understand too, we get a handful of these every year. And multiple times, they come in more than, you know, for the second violation shortly after we've shown them leniency.
And I promise you, for the second time, when you see me here for this, the same thing, just punish me as much as you can. This is my first time. I passed the second one. That's what I'm asking for this. I'm not making, I'm not paying myself.
But where was this concern when you were running your business? That's what I'm not understanding. I feel like we're the ones that have to bail you out of this. But if I was opening a business, I would make sure that I was doing everything I could to make sure that I'm not gonna lose money, I'm not gonna have to shut a day or pay fines. I would make sure, as the owner, that I had all these parameters in check.
Madam Counsel, I tried to explain what happened. I tried to explain that was a five-month in the business, what I was going through. I've been calling police. There, some of them, they, they even get my drink back from the people. That's what I was going through so much. I've been, that's, I tried to explain all this and the pressure I had. And that's what I can say.
Well, we have a motion and, uh...
Can I, can I just ask one more question to Adam or I guess Chrissy? When was the last time we deviated downwards? Do, does anyone know? Do you have that as a record? Not have that. Okay. I believe the... Cause I don't remember, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, sorry. Do you remember?
I do. I wasn't even on the council.
Well, there was one, maybe last year, where how the, uh, the check was executed was in question. That one was actually, the council rescinded that. Oh, we didn't even, okay. Following that case. Got it.
There was one, uh, in 2024 that, um, the fine was instituted, but the, uh, business remained open.
Do you remember that case either?
Yes.
I don't. We, we have, the council has deviated on multiple occasions in the last two years, um, on either the fine or the suspension penalty. Thank you. All right, I don't have any more questions, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the table for one-day suspension and $250 fine. I seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so roll call.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Onas Rosin?
Nay.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Idbo?
Nay.
Councilmember Kamish?
Nay.
Motion fails, it's tie vote.
Well, now what?
Try the other one.
Another motion?
The motion as it was written of $750 fine.
Okay.
See what happens.
Do you, are you gonna make the motion?
I can.
Okay.
I move a, a motion based on the staff report, including findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $750 and a one-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Councilmember Onas Rosin?
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings?
Nay.
Mayor Deschler?
Nay.
Councilmember Idbo?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Kamish?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kaiser?
Nay.
It's another tie vote, motion failed.
Do you want to be the tiebreaker?
Does anybody have a quarter we can use?
Too soon. I'm just kidding. My, my recommendation would be to find a compromise that's agreeable to both sides of some sort, whether through the fee or the penalty, the suspension penalty.
Well, um, you know, I would, I would be okay with a $750 fine and no, no, uh, one-day suspension.
Are you making that motion?
I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I can see where this is going tonight. All right, we, you know, we have to find some kind of middle ground compromise here.
We need to take a vote, or, or call a vote.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yay.
Mayor Deschler?
Yay.
Councilmember Idbo?
Nay.
Councilmember Kamish?
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Onas Rosin?
Nay.
Well...
Mayor?
Yes?
One option would be to lay this matter over, table it until your next meeting when you have seven councilmembers present.
I know what's gonna happen then. It's up to the, you know, up to the others. I'm not the only one here, so.
Can I make another motion? Uh, make a motion for a, a penalty of $300 and a one-day suspension?
I'm not gonna second, I mean, I'm not, I am not going to change my mind. So we can keep putting different motions. I, I just, it's just like the principle of the matter for me. So I, I'm not sure how fruitful that is.
Okay.
I'm the same with, with Tajee.
If anyone is, I mean, if any, if anyone is even kind of open to a compromise, you know, but I am not. Which is not helpful, but...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not either.
So governing is compromise sometimes.
Thousand percent. And in this scenario, it is a very black and white situation for me. So I just, there is no compromise in this situation. And this is actually why I requested that we review this whole process.
And we did. And it says up to...
No, but this is old.
Yes, this is old. So coming, next year, it's going to be much more explicit on how we do this.
Correct.
Per my request. So I am sticking to how I see this.
Tracy, are you willing to compromise? Okay. Is there a second?
Is there a second for Councilmember Kaiser's motion?
To, no, there is not.
Can I make a motion to table it? I'd make a motion to table this till next council meeting.
Second. It's non-debatable.
Oh, really?
Oh, really? What does that mean? We don't vote on it?
Can't discuss it.
Oh.
There's no discussion.
Gotcha.
Call the vote.
Oh, we still vote though.
Makes me mad. Okay, I'll call the vote for delaying this, tabling it until next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Aye.
Mayor Deschler?
Nay.
Councilmember Idbo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Nay.
Councilmember Onas Rosin?
Aye.
Okay, the matter is tabled until the next city council meeting, when we will have seven members present.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one, item 6.3. Council will consider civil penalties for a violation of liquor license regulations by Tequila Town, doing business as Tequila Town Authentic Mexican Cuisine and Bar located at 99 Willow Road. Well, then I should have known where the liquor store was because I go to Tequila Town. If you would like to come up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, just quickly. Yes, this third violation is for the same date of compliance check at Tequila Town. It was an on-sale sale to an underage decoy, and we have a representative from Tequila Town here.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Fabian Morales, one of the owners, together with my brother, Moises. I know the incident happened on December 6th, I think, right? December 6th?
Correct.
I was in there, in the restaurant. I had to go to Mexico for my, one of the anniversaries of my mom. She passed away in COVID. So I left a day before, I left the 5th, December 5th. And the man, my assistant manager and the bartender, it happened to him. You know, he was, he was one of the most strict persons, the ID, you know, because he was a bartender, of course. So he worked every day, you know. Maybe some of you guys seen him before, like last year. And I was in Mexico, just getting ready for whatever I was going to do over there. And then they called me. Hey, he actually did, you know. He texts me first, and he's like, hey, you know, this happened, and I made a mistake. And I was like, how come did that happen? You know, I mean, you're the most strict person in the restaurant, that always checks for the ID, you know, all the time. How can it happen to you? Oh, I was kind of busy, and then they show up at the bar, you know, the kid with the officer, I think the officer was like sitting in another table, that's what he said. And he was serving some other tables, when the kid shows up at the bar and asks for a beer or something like that, and he puts the beer on the bar top. And then that's when he found out that it was Tess, you know, so there is nothing else I can say, you know. He felt, he's not working with me anymore. He quit, you know. Pretty much, we had a conversation, and he's not with me anymore. After that, we, of course, we had some signs. We've been doing restaurant business for years, you know, my brother and me. We've been working with family before, and then we ended up doing our own business, you know. So we know that this cannot happen, you know. We, like I said, I've been working since I was like the bass boy. And even that, you know, I wasn't even allowed to touch the beers or the margaritas or whatever. So I know how this works, so I know that this cannot happen, like never, you know. We always say, we always give like a speech to the employees, where we can tell them, hey, once you start serving, you have to ask for the ID all the time first, like no matter what. If you're not sure, go get me, or go get the manager, or you know, whatever, and show the ID, you know, like, hey, one moment, one moment, and go show the ID. And that's what we do all the time, you know. And then after that, we got a training for the renewal of the license, because I think it's required, right? Now from now on. So we done that. We had the training, all my servers know what to do. And of course, we had the signs, and I'm on top of them all the time. Hey, every time, you know, if I see somebody, I'm always in the restaurant, you know, all the time, seven days a week, all day. And I'm always on top of the servers, ask for the ID, if the people young, you know, we took the classes. And after that, we got another test that we passed already, you know. Somebody show up at the bar, same thing, ask for the beer, can I see your ID? And the server was like, no, you're underage, I cannot sell you alcohol. Because he knows, you know, everybody knows that they need to do that. So the officer shows up to the bar and says, hey, congratulations, you passed, and they left. Because we know we had to do it, you know. I know we made a mistake, or he made a mistake. Me as a business owner, a small business owner too, you know, I had to take care of my business. So that's why I'm always on top of my employees and teaching them how to do it. Because I've been there, I've been an employee for years, you know. So, so, I mean, there's nothing else I can say. It's just, he made a mistake, he's gone, you know. So, I mean, I live over, you know, over the restaurants, so my sales, they pretty much, we're called, we named Tequila Town, so we sell a lot of margaritas, a lot of tequila, you know. So we depend, not 100% on the liquor sales, of course, because we sell more food than liquor, but it helps a lot, especially right now that it's been slow and been hard times, you know. The restaurant's been kind of slow this summer, it's almost like half of it of last summer.
Right.
So it's been kind of, kind of tough for us. And I don't know when did that happen to him. He had to go to, he had court at the Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, something like that. And I don't, I don't know, I don't talk to him anymore, so. I mean, he made me, you know, mad. So, because, I mean, he doesn't care. He, I mean, he's, he got in trouble too, of course, because, you know, he had to pay a fine as well, and he's, I don't, but I don't need that people. If you don't care about my business, you know, you need to be gone, you know. I care about my business. So there's not much else that I can say, you know.
I will say I had a dinner last week with a couple ladies that are clearly senior citizens, like me. And we were talking about Tequila Town, and they had said, yeah, we just went there for margaritas or whatever, and they ID'd us. We were laughing.
Yeah, everybody.
It feels so good to get ID'd.
Everybody gets ID'd. ID'd, yeah. Some people get mad, actually. They'd be like, hey, don't you see how old I am? People, you know, 50s, 60s. I'm like, there's a requirement. I have a sign at the front, like at the entrance, it's photo ID required for alcohol sales, something like that.
Yeah, I saw that.
So even if they're 50, 60, because we weren't even selling to the people that has the restrictions. Like, you know, some people have like no drugs or alcohol use on their back of the ID, ID, and we're not selling to them either.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I know it's their choice to consume alcohol, but if we see the ID, besides checking the date of the, how old they are, we always check the restrictions on the back as well. If they have some restriction, we don't sell them anything. They get mad, and some of they leave, you know, because they want to drink.
Right.
But we're like, yeah, I'm not going to risk my license just because 50, 60, 100, 200, you know.
Yeah. All right, does anybody have any questions?
I would just also say to you, thank you for coming and talking to us. I mean, it's probably clear my standpoint on the penalties, but I really do appreciate business owners coming and talking to us, especially when they're talking about, you know, what they learned from the experience and how they've gone and changed, you know, their practices. It, you know, makes, it shows that you care about your business, you share, you care about the community. And, yeah, it's really helpful for you to come and do that. So I do really appreciate that.
And I will put a plug in for the restaurant. They have chimichanga, seafood chimichangas. They're like my favorite.
I was going to bring something, but I didn't know if I was.
Anybody want to motion, make a motion for the penalty?
I know how you guys been, you know, you guys have been a little tough, you know, but I like it because that's, you guys are taking care of the community and the business and the laws, you know. We have to respect the laws, you know. I mean, I was, of what I heard, I'm okay paying the fine, but having a date not selling with the low sales right now, it was going to be a little bit more harder for me, you know. I can pay the, I can pay the fine, but not selling alcohol one day is, I know it's only one day, but, and like I said, I don't depend on the alcohol only, but people sometimes they just walk away when they, even if, even if they're not drinking. Oh, you're not selling margaritas or tequila? How come you, you're named, because we have another location in Esco, Minnesota. And we're in front of a school, like across the street of the school. And they, the city council made us take off our sign, and, because it says tequila. So they didn't want any sign showing tequila to the school. So we called Tequi Town over there.
What is that called?
Tequi Town. We took off the L and the A.
Oh.
So we only call Tequi Town, because we're not allowed to have tequila worth showing in front of the school, you know. So I know, I know the rules, and we follow the rules.
Yeah.
As soon as we heard about the council, we covered the L and the A, so Tequi Town. But, you know, and people, we only sell beer and wine, no hard liquor. And people be like, ah, I like your margarita, but I'd rather have it with the tequila instead of wine. So they walk off. You know, that's what it is, it is what it is, you know. This is a small town, so we, we're doing good.
Good.
Besides that. Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $750 and a one-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
I'll second that.
Okay. And I'm just going to say that for this one, I'm going to vote for it, only because I know you can sell food, and you can, you know, I know it's not going to be easy, and I feel your pain. And I'll try to come and order some food to help make up for the loss of sales.
You could have a day of like virgin, virgin margaritas.
Yeah, maybe make a big pitch that day for mocktails or something like that, but any other discussion from other council members? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Motion passes, so.
All right.
I'm sorry, but I hope you've learned a lesson, and I think you have.
We did, yeah.
Yeah.
You say you guys are going to check on the dates, right?
Yeah, the city clerk, her name is Chrissy Cirrus, she will be reaching out to you, and you guys can kind of work through a date, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I think it just has to be within, what, 30 days or something? Ideally.
Typically is.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you.
I can leave after this, right?
We wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that was the end of our council meeting of the agenda items. So we will move to announcements. Application deadline to register for the Community Police Academy is Tuesday, September 9th at 3:00 PM. Classes are held on Tuesday nights from 6:00 to 9:00, starting September 9th, and then they last through October 21st. And I believe that's a free program for any Crystal resident that's interested. Our next city council work session is Thursday, September 11th at 6:30. It'll be held here at the City Hall in the Upper Community Room, and it's also available on Zoom. The City, Crystal Vehicle Fair is Saturday, September 13th, from 10 until noon, at the Crystal Community Center. And that's when the fire trucks and the police equipment, and I don't know if we bring snowplows or what, but, so if you want to look at all of our vehicle equipment, that's where it'll be. Our next actual city council meeting is Tuesday, September 16th at 7:00 in the council chambers at City Hall. Crystal Farmers Market is every Tuesday from 3:00 to 6:30 at the Crystal Community Center and runs through September 30th. The city is also accepting applications for several volunteer positions on our boards and commissions. We have openings on the Sustainability Commission, Inclusion and Diversity Commission, Planning Commission, Employee Review Board, and on the Metro Blue Line Business Advisory Committee. For more information, please check out our city website.